I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow. Cool.
Okay, thank you for coming, everybody. Let's see here. Minutes.
Make most recent approval of minutes.
Oh, second.
Yeah, motion in the second. Any discussion? Questions?
Aye.
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 And you voted too, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Just because you're presiding doesn't mean you're losing your vote.
It's on your left ear, it's in your right.
I just stopped, I know, I'm used to it. It's been a long day, guys.
Where'd that come from? Okay, correspondence?
Nope, everything's with patents.
Ah, this brings down the public call me.
Brenda, could you...
The opinion that Bates could get from state, it doesn't have to be something here with council. It was already approved, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Been approved, so...
Yeah, and she won't be here for two weeks at least. She's at academy this week and next week she's on vacation. That's what she told me.
Hasn't been submitted for a job.
Okay.
But I just thought that they should transparent.
Okay.
So, and it's just fine to go talk to Congress.
Any other members of the public? Council reports, animal. Two barking dogs responded to... One dog bite responded to one ticket written.
Yep, I had two complaints on dog barking nonstop, and so I told the complainants that they got to document it and record it if they can, and be willing to go in front of the judge. Nobody ever wants to do that. But, I said, "I'll tell you," and they didn't want... Don't tell them. You know, you're gonna complain, but you don't wanna tell them. Don't tell them, 'cause they'll be mad at you. But I says, "I will go talk to them and not tell a boo that you're getting complaints in the general area and see if I did anything." And I haven't heard anything yet. Dr. Park was one of them, and he hated even talking to him. He said, "I'm such a good neighbor, I don't wanna beat me in." But I talked to them, and then they came and talked to him and gave him a bunch of biscuits, and he made friends. "Oh, well, doesn't bark anymore."
Wow.
But, he says, "Now I have to have biscuits."
Yeah. Okay.
There's no way to show it.
No more barking.
That was a big deal.
Our guys take biscuits around during meter reading.
When we read meters, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, it's with them.
If we don't, them dogs are mad.
Yeah, I bet they are now. They're wheeling out.
Until they get one going out.
That camera explains why I walked by the house you were talking about. Yesterday evening, ladies out there tell those dogs, "Don't bark."
Don't bark. They're trying.
I understand that.
Okay.
The dog bite was... Actually, a boy reached over the fence, the dog was in their own yard, and was teasing it or something like that. Isn't that what it was, pretty much?
Yeah, they were playing outside the fence. The kid leaned over the fence, 'cause their kid were in their yard, and the dog reached up and grabbed him on the teeth.
Amazingly enough, had radio shots, documentation, and everything.
Wow.
And so all they had to do is take them to bed after ten days and prove that he didn't have radios. So, the people didn't get a ticket. Their dog, they were doing what they were supposed to.
What happened with the other dog? You had the white dog?
The white dog I have. Now, I wrote a ticket to another guy for his dog being loose. Not this dog, a different dog. And so, he's got a ticket in court. Now, whether he... What he does with that, that's up for the judge. At least he's got a ticket there. And now, I've got another dog, which is, for sure, is his. But I've had it for five days, and he hasn't come and got it. Hadn't talked to us, so I'm just gonna call the Humane Society and see if they'll take it.
I did call the Humane Society, 'cause Roger and I were talking, and they... So, this would be... They didn't surrender it to you then?
No.
They just didn't? It's just abandoned?
Yep.
Basically, okay. 'Cause I was thinking that maybe we were gonna have to do something serious with the other one, where we'd have to get him to surrender the dog, or that he would voluntarily surrender the dog.
Our ordinance says three days. We have to hold them for three days.
And then if they don't collect them...
If they don't collect them, they're...
Considered abandoned.
They become the property of the...
They're considered of the towns.
Oh, okay.
And you can deal with them.
Okay.
And we've done it for years. We've had an agreement with...
Humans, the Humane Society, if they are not full, usually would take them, but it's been a lot of years, and they've changed hands.
Yes.
I haven't talked to them in years, 'cause we haven't had any reason to.
Yeah, he said he preferred you to go to the pound first.
Missoula pound?
Yeah.
They won't take them.
But they may not take them.
Then the option is just put the dog down.
Yeah. If I can't... Yeah, if nobody will take them, we can call a vet, and we take them in and put them to sleep.
But he said, "If you go to the pound and they say they can't, then call him." So, he wanted sort of to be second on the list. I don't know if, 'cause they're full. He said, "We're pretty full." I think he had one kennel left.
Flooding and stuff in Missoula, I'll bet you they are.
Yeah.
Like Rodney was saying, they're boarding with dogs. Two.
But what was interesting that I didn't realize is they don't have like a thirty-day... Will put down after thirty days.
No.
And their adoption rate is almost as good as the Humane Society.
Right.
From the pound. So, they do make a real effort to adopt those dogs out and stuff.
Yeah, well, I'll give them a call.
Which I didn't know. I thought maybe thirty days and now you're done, but they keep them longer. So, either...
Yeah, I'll call them, and then I don't... There's a thing called Trax. Isn't that from Thompson Falls or something? I don't have a number for them, but if anybody knows where I could get it, I'd call them too.
We can get... I know where I can get it. Catfinder.com.
Are they?
Yeah.
And there are no killed. Last I heard, there are no killed.
Yeah.
It's a sweet little dog.
Yeah, yeah.
Just kiss you to death. Trip all over you.
Aw, he'll get it.
Just wants some attention and food.
He'll get it.
That's it.
Good, okay.
Okay, parks.
All mowing and trimming being done?
Yep. I hate pine cones. Let me tell ya.
Oh, boy.
This is the most in my twenty-five years. I picked up twenty bucketfuls last week, and I just started today. I got like ten feet into the park, and got ten bucketfuls.
Oh, my.
Oh, moly. Had somebody from back east picking them up. What are you doing with them? Pine cones. They were visiting some friends, and they were gonna take some back with them. You gotta take them all.
Take them all, yeah. You get one, you get one.
She said, "Take them all."
Yeah, yeah. It's very...
We charge twenty-five cents a piece for those.
Yeah. Yeah, some of them are those nice, big ones that they make stuff out of. She took quite a few. I'm not... Any comment?
I was a little disappointed on the... We had walked the plank in the park, but those leaves were left there in the parking lot.
When we get to them, we get to them.
Well, they've been there almost whole week.
Oh, yeah. But still, when we get to them, we get to them.
You know, it doesn't look very good to people who are coming into the park. They're thinking, "Well, what's this doing in the middle of the parking lot?"
This has been doing that for twenty-five years. We gotta store them somewhere, and then you clean them all the way up and back and store them until we can get done with whatever we're doing, and then we come pick them up. The same with the pine needles. Sometimes they'll sit in that whole parking lot for a week.
Where do you take them when you... Once you got them picked up?
We haul them out to the shop.
Well, I guess I don't understand why they get to sit there for a week.
'Cause we have other stuff to do besides that.
Are you that busy that you can't... Once you pick them up and put them there, then you can't just put them into the dump truck and haul them out to the shop?
Well, we are busy, and that's just... When we get done with everything else, okay, we got time, let's go get them. And he's cleaning the streets, and yeah, we could stop and go get them, but I've never had a complaint. You're the first person in twenty-five years to do that.
I mean, it looks like you don't care. I mean, you put them right there in the middle of the parking lot, and they sit there for a week, and it just looks like, huh.
Well, you're entitled to your opinion. That has nothing to do with caring. It's the staging from cleaning them up, putting them in place, and then getting to them with a dump truck and an end loader when we're both able to. And then we got rid of them.
Well, when you're done staging them, I would assume that you should have followed time. But it looked pretty bad. And it wasn't just me. I had heard a couple of other comments on... It looked...
And I don't even know if you were done picking them all up by the time you picked them up.
Um, I don't think I was done picking them all up by the time they get them. But I didn't think about that. But, anyway, noted.
Crime in court.
Town court of Superior. We had one partner family member assault, causing bodily injury to a partner or family member, first offense. Two initial appearances, one omnibus, and one change of plea.
Sheriff's not here.
We don't have the sheriffs.
Pool. Pool was drained, and large line was inspected. Line was plugged, and pool was refilled.
Yeah, we cameraed the big line, and Liz Guppin was there, and George, and then another guy, Ed, from down on the golf course. I think that's named Ed Lowen.
Ed Seven.
Yeah, yeah, so they looked at it. And when we went through the big line, it starts at the bottom and then has a joint, 'cause it's going up, and then it goes like that. And when we first got just in our way, we saw this pretty good-sized void. None of us could tell exactly what it was, but it looked like there was a hole off to the side. Couldn't tell, but everybody thought it was... Didn't look like the rest of the nice, smooth pipe. And then, as you go up, you're running into the seams of how the pipes put together, and there were some seams, they looked like they were that far apart, and the other ones were nice and tight. But, so we went all the way up as far as we could, and that's what we saw in that. So, then we plugged it and filled the pool back up to a little over half. The deep end was complete full. Within a day, it dropped a foot. Within a week, it was gone. So, that means the other line, at least down in the deep end, is leaking even more than the big one.
And that was under no pressure?
Yeah.
Which is the feed... One of the feed lines, then, apparently is... What's doing is coming backwards when you don't have pressure on it?
The one that is normally our pressure line, that we figure is even leaking worse than the big one. 'Cause the other one's just a flowback, and it's five inches. And then the other one is through your pump that sends all your heated water out to all the vents. That's the one that was left unplugged, and it just dropped.
So, it has to come back once there's no...
So, all of the piping is...
And we can't get a camera down?
No. It's... You'd have to cut all the plumbing in the pool room, and then hope you could go down, turn, and turn. I don't know that I could do that with that camera. It's got a head that size. It'll go around a nice, smooth corner, but it'd be tough to camera that one. And you can't plug it. 'Cause I showed, you know, as Ed was saying, well, there's ten of those vents that come up, and they've got all sorts of kind of weird fixtures where they...
Each one?
Yeah, come up, and so...
And that's understandable.
Yeah. That's what we found from doing the tests in camera. And it's pretty obvious that that flow line coming in, it's got a lot of problems, because that water went down fast. And drained itself, right down to the last... Wherever that last little thing is, I don't remember exactly where it is, it's right below it. It went down about three inches of water from six feet.
Once it creates a suction, it would keep flowing going.
Yeah. Pressure of the water will shut it down.
Okay. Sewer.
Before you move on to that, a couple of things is, right at this point, we still have... Want to shut the electricity off, that's one thing. Also, that propane tank, the eligibility of that... Anything shifts and breaks that underground pipe, or I don't know what it is. It was a pipe?
Yeah.
Underground piping from the propane tank.
It's a steel pipe.
And it's a thousand-gallon propane tank, so it's not a little propane tank. It is piped to the pool. And then, if we'll do a resolution at the next meeting, because under our MOU, we've talked about the... And since we're gonna set up the capital improvement fund, we would set that up by resolution at the next meeting, and then also have a budget amendment that would say that transferring, specifically transferring the remainder of this year's over to that fund, so that we have it documented.
Well, I would say, yeah. I mean, you need to shut the power off and shut the tank off. Because no matter what, you don't have time to open the pool. I mean, that's understandable, but...
Do we have to empty the propane tank?
Well, most of them can be locked.
Yeah, they can lock them right at the tank.
And that's safe, detained.
Yeah, I'll ask.
Senex owns the tank.
Yeah, I'll ask Kirby what he would prefer.
'Cause that's Kirby, he'll shut it off. Yeah, there's no reason to keep that going.
Do we need to mark the site that, or not?
No, just... It's just part of the process, so that we have everything in line, that you guys know what we're doing.
And you might think, have the summer to think about it, 'cause if, you know, they're still throwing it out that they're gonna try to fix it, which is... Makes no difference to me. Anything could be fixed. I mean, you know, they said, "Well, we could probably fix it for a couple hundred thousand." Well, you could. I mean, you probably could. Anything can be cut and fixed. So, if you're gonna... If they're thinking about that line, we're gonna have to fill that up in the fall and keep it full through the winter.
Well, if they're gonna fix it, what's that gonna do as far as bringing this thing up to code?
Well, hold on now. We don't necessarily have to bring it up to code. There is some grandfather things there that possibly... Grandfathers, I see it. I... It's gonna take a little bit of research on that part to find out what could be done, and then what... What? I know that pulling... And the people from pulling the park would be willing to, if it would be feasible, to do that. And if, one, say, the filtration system has to be brought up to code, then they would raise the money for that, too. They are definitely know that if that pool would be repaired, that they're in need of a new pole house. I mean, and that in itself doesn't have to be done by an engineer, but still has to be...
You wanna be careful doing a public building without jumping through the hoops. If you don't do that...
Well, it has to be done by the health department, but it doesn't have to be done by an engineer.
Okay, so if they do a building, say they do a building, something's built incorrectly, something happens, this town is responsible?
Well, yeah, but...
So, because you can't go back on to... You can't go back to an engineer, say it was designed inappropriately? I'm just laying it out there, so my concern is that you cover the town in every which way possible to make it safe.
Well, that's understandable, Brenda, but an architect could design it.
That's true. The same thing, you're gonna have to have that...
Yeah, yeah. If you don't just do it on your own, maybe you have to have somebody design it.
Right, right. The other thing is...
But it doesn't have to be done by... Unless...
If they are able to fix the pool, they need to address ADA.
Yeah.
And that means ADA accessible to that pool, if they're gonna fix it, because it is not ADA accessible now.
Right.
There's nothing on that pool that's ADA accessible.
But if there is a possibility that it could be fixed and aligned, you know, so then that helps to alleviate some problems.
Right, right. I just wanna make sure that this community as a whole in the future is protected from any of that kind of stuff, so that if something was to... Because, I forbid, when buildings are designed, design flaws happen. Not that they're always meant to, but something can happen. If we have no way to go back and say, "This was something that was designed into it," who do you go back to and say, "This needs to be replaced, or you need to fix it"?
Or you need to fix it, yeah. That's understandable, but, I mean, I'm here to protect the community, too.
Yeah.
There is some other options, possibly, but some research has to be done first on what actually can be covered under a grandfathering camp.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and working the numbers out as to whether fixing this pool and rebuilding the building and bringing it up to ADA or whatever is feasible money-wise. Money spent versus a new one, which one's the bang for the buck, whether this one... Whether a new one would be more expensive or not. Need to work out those numbers and find out.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and all that stuff, so... Have you gotten anything from the engineer?
No, it's... Not yet. They're still doing cost analysis.
Okay, cool.
It's gonna... I don't know when that'll come back.
Bunch of files.
Okay, sewer.
All checks and maintenance being done, all testing has been completed. Final lift station pumps rebuilt and on hand. And final lift station had two issues, rock and bolt.
Yep, we got the two pumps, so it makes us nervous when we don't have backup pumps. And they got them built fairly fast. I mean, it wasn't too bad. It wasn't as bad as we thought they were.
Cheap.
Yeah, relatively cheap, 'cause we've had them come back at several thousands of dollars to rebuild those same things. Under a thousand. So, that was pleasant surprise. But now we got those sitting on hand when something goes wrong. And then we had a... Power must have flipped down there. Both pumps were kicked, and the blowers went off. And so, Ronnie was down there first. He's pumping it all down, and all of a sudden, we hear this clunk. Well, before that, he pulled one up, 'cause it was showing... Normally, it shows twenty-two, twenty-three amps, and it was showing like fifteen to eighteen. Something going on with this pump. And so, we watched it for a couple days, and so he finally pulled it, and there was a rock, that big a round, sucked up into there. Couldn't go through, but it was spinning on that nut down in there and making grooves on that rock. Now, how that gets in there is somebody threw it. Those rocks don't just fall out of nowhere. It's not the first time they've found stuff like that.
Jailhouse uniforms.
They have thrown them.
What'd you say? I mean, you're right.
He'd have thrown them, pulled a manhole. Somebody would've dropped a manhole in a...
And it went down, and...
I pulled out coil, a car coil, and I pulled out a chunk of metal that they did on purpose. They laid it on the outlet going like that. And that didn't just come flopping down. Yeah, it wouldn't go down the pipe. Laid it like that. Fortunately, it hadn't caked up around it yet, and so the water was able to flow over for a little before it plugged it, and I could get down in there, otherwise it hadn't have pumped out. But it's happened that they did that.
Jailhouse sheets, jailhouse jumpsuits.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I'd get their socks underwear.
Don't know how they get them down through there, but they do.
Well, they usually call Bill Terrell first, and then he does his thing and shoves them out into the main, because he can't get them back, and then they make their way down to us. He usually gives us a heads up. Heads up, he says, "No, I couldn't pull it out, so beware."
Be ready for it. Catch your mitts.
Sometime later, it usually shows up.
Oh, no.
But when it... The bolt power, once they're hit backed up ways, a couple manholes, and they turn it on, and all of a sudden, there's... And it stops, saw, and pulled it up, and there was a bolt in it. And that, well, maybe it fell off. We looked at every bolt on that pump. There wasn't a missing bolt anywhere, so where it came from, I don't know. It didn't hurt the pump, but it stopped and made it pull it out. Never any joy. Sewer.
Oh, boy. Water. Water, all testing being completed, been completed, all checks and maintenance being done on the water. I do have a question for maybe Tim. I've been getting these from Steve Ackerman. What is this about if water quality needs drinking, temporary casing, about drilling another well?
Ask him.
Yeah, I can't see him. He's right at the...
What?
The Tim about... He's looking for another well.
He's asking Steve Ackerman.
Ackerman. Exploring alternative drinking water source in early April. Did you get one of these?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you explain what...
They're doing up the creek?
Yeah. What they're doing up the creek?
Bob Wintergrass deals at Forest Service, has a implied responsibility to consider some of the water source for the town's security.
Oh.
And in order to do that, you would have to discover a viable water source. They were gonna drill well in a couple locations. One of them was gonna be on the DNRC land. The DNRC said, "No trespass," which declined respectfully to have a well on their property. They've come back down to a different location that's actually on Forest Service property, which leads to another series of questions on that. But they're considering trying to develop a test well down there to see if they can get some kind of quantity of water and what the quality could be for it to test by. So, whether that particular piece of property would be transferred to the town and have a long-term lease or whatever. Anyway, that would potentially replace water in the infiltration gallery, you know, into the tank, and be a lot less expensive to develop that water source and pump it down into the tank than pumping it up.
Coming up. Ah, okay. So, it's... They're looking up Black Creek somewhere.
Yeah, and at some point, I'm gonna have the spring tested again. I'll send out a sample. I mean, they've done all this work. You never know. Maybe it'll come back clean, and see what happens, just to see.
Be interesting.
See what the... You could make a pretty good case that that infiltration gallery is not very much service for it, because I wonder if it was going by chopped up muddy brown.
Oh man, I've never seen it that color.
Did you see what was coming out of the outboard, the tape?
Height.
It's clear?
Really?
Took pictures of it.
It was temper.
Huh?
It was temper.
Yeah. I mean, you know, their biggest concern is that there's surface influence on that infiltration gallery, and if there's surface influence, it wouldn't have been as clear as the water.
It would have been dirty.
Or, I mean...
Somewhat, yeah.
Colored, it wouldn't have been colored. I took another picture of the new channels at Black Creek.
Yeah, it was strange colored water. I had high water before, and it never come down looking like, "This is muddy," but this like coffee with green.
Quite coffee with too much cream.
Yeah. And we watch that, we check that every day. It's overflowed, come close to overflowing one year, I think it was ninety-six, ninety-seven. And we had to watch it twenty-four seven. We were doing six, twelve-hour shifts, twelve-hour shifts to keep the debris out of there. And we pulled quite a bit out of it, but it's, right now, it's down a little bit. As long as you keep it clear, that culvert will take all the water that comes out of there. You gotta keep it clear.
Thank you for watching.
Streets. Street cleaning being done, some potholes filled, patching done on the twenty-third?
It was gonna be on the twenty-third, I think it's gonna be Thursday. It's supposed to be after, once they even look at it, possibly, or maybe Thursday just before they look and go ahead and do it. It's gonna be this week. Yeah, it's gonna be the twenty-third.
Oh, cool.
Right. They called and said they had some cancellations due to the rain, so he's up for moving it up?
Of course you can.
Yeah, so we can quit here and about respond.
Let me forget, I gotta come take pictures.
And you'll do all of them at once?
Sounds like they'd be able to. We're gonna add a couple, that we decided that since they're here, we might as well have a couple more. One in front of Passels wasn't part of it, but we're gonna have to cut that out. And then the one between the Masonic Temple and whatever that is.
Yeah.
They're gonna have that, cut that little one.
Good.
Seventeen, I saw that one. So, we might get a little learning.
Good deal.
We gotta spend the money.
Fire. Let's see, six emergency calls, three training stations, recruiting, departmental issues.
A couple of thoughts for you. We had our live fire burn that month in April, went real well. We were joined by St. Regis, which is a real blessing, St. Regis and Superior working together is a good thing, especially during the live fire training. And then April seventeenth, we had our department dinner, so we had thirty people attend our department dinner, and went very well. Everyone got recognized, and we also signed up at that dinner, a new volunteer firefighter who's got a CDL. And that's a really good thing for us. If we've gotta move equipment out on the highway, having a CDL is a good thing if they go along. The biggest thing, I think, that happened to us that month, aside from the fires, was that we met for the first time with the Rural Fire Board, and we were able to pull the rural district together and have a board meeting. We had an agenda, had nine items that we talked through, it was a real productive, constructive meeting, took minutes, handed them to the county so that they're off the hook for a year. And hopefully, we won't have to hear about it for a while. And they approved the purchase of a new vehicle for us. So, they have a pretty cash flush right now because of the airport emergency crisis response duty we did during the summer, and they agreed to use that money to purchase a new five fifty Ford. And then DNRC has given us a grant to build the wildland bed that will go on it. So, we'll get a brand-new pump, we'll get a brand-new tank, we'll get everything brand-new, including a brand-new two thousand and nineteen F five fifty with all the safety equipment, modern vehicle. It'll replace that bright lime green thing we have out there that was built in the eighties that certainly does not have anything safe in it, but it'll be our new frontline well and ring. So, that's on order, and should be here in August. The other thing that I want to share with you is we had a fellow come in who wants to burn the old Hilltop Motel. And that triggers a deep search of your code, and your code is fairly silent on burning of buildings. The, what the code actually says is that any person burning large land clearing debris shall constantly attend the fire and shall make adequate provisions to prevent the fire from spreading. So, he comes in, he says, "I wanna burn the building." And we've gotta back up a little bit and realize that we don't really have the ability under your code to be very involved. Who does is statewide DEQ. So, I called the Department of Environmental Quality and talked to them a little bit about burning, and he gave him the information that he had to go get a permit from DEQ, and DEQ kind of hummed and hawed a bit and said, "Well, maybe we can solve it over the phone if he understands what he can burn and can't burn." DEQ's position is that you can't burn asphalt shingles, you can't burn drywall, you can't burn materials, man-made materials. And even if you take wood and you apply stain and paint to it, you can't burn that either. What you can burn, you've got a grub, separate it out, and put your raw lumber, and that can be burned. And he's moved his very large excavator in there behind the Hilltop Motel, and it looks like he's getting ready to demo the building. So, I suspect is that we'll have to be several more visits with him, make sure that, one, he's talked to the DEQ, and, two, to make sure that we're aware of when he's going to burn, because you can just bet we'll get dozens of calls that we've got a structure on fire and get after it. So, there'll be several challenges there, but food for thought is, down the road, I know that you have a chance to look at the structured organization of your town every now and then, and when that surfaces, maybe you wanna give some thought to putting a bit more teeth into what you can burn and under what conditions you can burn within the community, specifically if someone wants to burn a building. But end of the road right now seems to be DEQ, they're the ones that, that issue we handed off if we get complaints to.
The Hilltop, now that the one east of...
West. See, old motel right near us, you make a left on the other side of the freeway. There are some real old units, six of them together, that are all just single units attached together, they're not freestanding. It's one building, and it's right behind the Hilltop Motel sign, and his excavator, rig excavator is parked back there.
Right on Black Creek Road.
Right on Black Creek Road.
Like, yeah, right.
Yeah, Gary said he's gonna take them all, take them down, and then he's gonna put a new water line up there to those, 'cause he's keeping the last two little individual ones.
The individual ones.
But he never told us anything about burning. He didn't say anything about burning.
Well, he will hopefully have talked to DEQ and maybe changed his mind about burning.
Yeah.
But when he discussed it with me, he intended, he wanted us to burn the whole thing. There actually is an exemption for fire departments to burn buildings, but you really have to have a constructive reason to do that.
It could be for practice, to practice how to attack it.
Yeah, you would probably light fires in the building to simulate a real fire, but not burn it to the ground.
Okay.
Because what you're gonna do by burning it to the ground is you're gonna put all the things out that the DEQ doesn't want you to put out, so you're gonna be burning shingles, you're gonna be burning drywall.
Insulation.
Yeah, insulation, a whole bunch of bad things.
Yeah, he's got water and stuff going up into each one of them apartments, he can't just...
Snap off from the main.
Burn them, because their water's gonna start flowing, and if we shut it off, that kills his two apartments that he wants. Those are all on the same line that go up that...
Northwest Energy has power lines running over those buildings, so there's a handful of issues that he'll have to deal with. But at the end of the day, we'll keep an eye on it, and we'll touch base with DEQ.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I can send an email out, see what the communities have for codes for burning buildings.
Right.
I'll do that.
Yeah.
Okay. Council concerns?
I have one, and that's the sidewalk from the June Baker Street apartment on the corner, they didn't make that ADA accessible. I don't know. I had, you know, I thought that was supposed to be handicap apartments, some of them were supposed to be handicap apartments to begin with, and that, you know, when I looked at the sidewalk, they didn't slope that down toward the street, which, why that would have got overlooked, I don't know.
I'll shoot, I'll shoot Bob Robertson an email tomorrow, and Jim Morton. Yeah, let's go.
Yeah, because really, that should have...
Sure.
And they didn't slope any of the driveways, going anywhere they're parked. I guess maybe you don't have to, but usually you do the slope on either side of your driving.
Do they have some on the street that they have to repair there?
Yeah, they have some of that, but...
Unless they're planning on paving out to the sidewalk.
Yeah.
I'll ask him about the corner for handicapped accessibility.
Any other council concerns? Okay, unfinished business, EPA Superfund update.
I think I mentioned that the DEQ did some additional testing on Black Creek, and what I passed around is a picture of the rechanalization of the Black Creek up there. It's supposed to be kind of held within the little green spots, but the green spots are disappearing, so.
Under the water. Amazing.
Fake bank that they spent many, many hours sticking down to the ground. Anyway, besides that, they did some additional testing on Black Creek on three properties that front on Black Creek, the one is, I mean, just up here, it was kind of the no man's land between city limits and not, and so Forest Service didn't cover it, because they had property right above it. Anyway, the Dent property and the next one down below, and Mineral County property, there's contamination on all three of those properties, so. It looks like it could be a very little minor project, so what the DEQ's gonna do and how they'll talk and talk pretty soon. In the meantime, there was a property over on Fourth Street that, they was doing some project out there, I don't know which one of it has the big shed, they were doing some new sidewalks and cement work over there when EPA was here and on and testing. Anyway, somebody from the crew said, "Oh, you don't need your property tested," so yeah, they didn't have the property tested, and now they wanna sell it, and people don't own, go in the front area, you're not gonna touch your property without some kind of testing. I'm not quite sure how, the EPA threw it back to me and said, "Good luck, see ya, have fun, do what you can do with it." And then about two months later, the DEQ said, "We're doing this work up there, we have an XRF machine, so we'll come in and do that." And I'm going, "Okay, fine, but if you're gonna do that, are you gonna do the building too?" I haven't got an answer on the building, but I think if they do one, they're probably doing the other, so. Too easy with talking to the property.
You said the other one was on Fourth Avenue?
What?
The one was on Fourth Avenue, Fourth Street.
Yeah, I'm struggling with the name.
They were building something?
Sidewalk? They were doing sidewalks or something?
Well, they had done some sidewalks in the past, or maybe not so much sidewalks, they did a bunch of cement work, like add to the block or something.
Only one I think of. Christopherson.
Christopherson.
They did a lot of work. Yeah, they just sold that house.
That's not right in the corner.
They tried to sell that house.
They tried to sell that house. So, they, that didn't go through.
The sale's supposed to go through on the plane first. I just got notice of that today.
Yeah.
Don't know.
Don't know if EPA's gonna, or DEQ's gonna be here by that time. It might, it might be, I don't know, it's contingent to hear whether. Looks like we're gonna hopefully get that thing adjusted, so. The DEQ is coming up Friday with the EPA, they're gonna do some more survey. I took the pictures of the Black Creek, I had a few more than that, and the state account, you can't send pictures in the state account, but the new picture, that's more than one by one, and it won't go through, so. Anyway, I sent them off to the finer technical, and they were able to read them all, and the guy did his review, and was right over here, because they're like, "Oh, wow, look at all that." So, the contractor's coming back, I don't know that they're gonna do something in the immediate, I think they're gonna let the water kind of recede and go back down.
Flush it downstream.
I didn't, I didn't look, I didn't picture of Black Creek coming into the thing, but I'll tell you, DEQ would have some kind of big cowl like that, but hey, this is the DEQ, so I don't know how the DEQ's gonna have a cowl with a DEQ, but... In any way, a lot of quality people would definitely have something to say about that.
If he does.
So, they're gonna come back, they're gonna look at a few things and kind of finish off their last part of the project and stuff, so. Not hearing a lot about the Forest Service side of things, but they're trying to clean up and what they're doing, so. It's in the plans, it's in the works, but I'm still not sure that that's gonna happen this summer, because generous as the Forest Service was, I think they got, somebody had a lot of money spent on their behalf, and they gave it to the DEQ, so I think they're feeling that they're short cleanup, they're out of their stretch, that's still, so, we can be new. So, it's kind of where we are now.
Recycling project.
Well, just by...
I came back from Georgia expecting it to be up and running.
It is running. It is running. It was close there, we were wondering whether it was going to be, but we did...
Kudos to Emily to get Chad Bauer to say that we could do the four hundred and fifty full, because when they talked to me, they were gonna raise it to six hundred and ninety full.
Before they even put the container there. It was like, wait a minute, timeout. You said, so he is gonna honor that contract of four fifty for three months, and then he said, "We'll have to maybe renegotiate." And it's like, yeah, we're gonna renegotiate, you're right, because we're not gonna pay seven hundred dollars, you know, come on. You know, and then there's rumors, I cannot confirm these rumors, though, that St. Regis is gonna do recycle, and this is something separate from their cleanup, you know, deal, and they were only gonna charge them five hundred dollars, and it's like, wait a minute here, this is not gonna, this does not work out. You're gonna only charge them five hundred, and you're gonna raise ours to six seventy, ninety?
Six ninety.
No. So, we will renegotiate after three months, but it is going, and the businesses are thrilled. We are, you know, if they support over fifty dollars, we're picking up their cardboard. It's, cardboard is the hard thing for them to get rid of, because it fills up their garage, fills up their garage too, but their cans so fast, so they're very happy. You know, Superior and Mineral and Energy Partners, bless their hearts, they've put up a hundred dollars a month, and we are, did you get the check from Durango's?
Yes, Ruth said she got it while I was gone.
Okay, good, good, so she's paid up.
And then, we have the printed sheet that tells them about the recycling, there's a bunch of thing across the bottom for twelve months, so that somebody in town will get one free per month, and then they'll be asked to drop a few dollars in to help after that, and that will be put in with the newsletter in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, so it...
Yeah, we're just gonna mail it, and we're only gonna mail it to the people that are actually living in town, the landlords out of state now, we're not gonna mail it to them, but we're gonna mail it in town. Then we have printed enough in cake for the people that live, like in the apartments, that they could come and pick one up. So, they can show us the people there. Or we can give her copies of them, they can have them out there.
So, I think June is really gonna be when we're gonna get more participation, I think it'll be, maybe we can make some posters and stuff, I think it'll get going, but we're getting out the wrinkles and snags there.
And your open what days?
Wednesdays and Saturdays, ten to four. And thanks to Roger and Rodney, yay, we got the, the kiosk is up, it's bright green, you can't miss it, it's about this color. And so, people can man it, and the bin is locked, so even if the gate is open, the bin is locked until people are there, so we can keep it clean and supervised and so forth. So, so far, so good, it's going good, and we're putting our money in, well, I'm putting my money in there, and Lorene is, she is gonna look at getting a sign, one of those banner kind of signs. She, I think, was gonna get a quote from, what is the guy up at the west end?
Gadgets.
Yes, yes, gadgets. And then we could put our sponsors, you know, the people that, you know, our town, we've sponsored it.
It's very reasonable, too.
Yeah, that's what I heard, he is pretty reasonable on those, so.
Clark.
Right, yes, yeah, so she apologizes for not being here, but she had some things to be, so. So, anyway, we're getting started, and it's going good so far, so.
So, cleanup day is Saturday?
Yes.
Nine to two. We only have one guy, Roger, I don't think, you're out of town this weekend, right? Okay. I did call the paper today, because they put in the paper that the town was providing dumpsters for local residents. I got a call from out of town. Guy was very excitable, he was not mean to me, but he was very excitable, because he knows that it's for town residents only, and he has neighbors loading up tires and appliances. And I said, "Well, tell them to take appliances to Sunset Salvage, don't have a clue about tires." But he is concerned that when we turn them away, because I said we're gonna turn them away, that they'll take them up by his place, up Second Creek, and dump them, and he'll have to take them to the dump himself, again. So, just so we're aware that that could be happening, I did ask her to put in the paper as a retraction or a notice that this is for within the town limits. And then we put up the posters today, because it's, if we put them up any sooner than today, people still wouldn't pay much attention to it. And when I put them up this year, I highlighted the within-town limits part, so. But we're up and running, and I'm gonna check with them tomorrow and see how we're at.
Basically, the pickups that Roger will do is just elderly, correct?
Pretty much, there's a couple that have, that just don't have a way to get up there themselves, can't lift it or something, but, yeah, we only have about ten total on the list. So, yeah, it made the difference when we said, "No, if you don't call in, we're not gonna do it." Got another call today about that property down there, Evangelos. Have you had a chance to talk to him about all the garbage that's stacked in that van and around it?
Sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, they're concerned now between the mice and the heat, making it really smelly, so, yeah. And it's not just a little pile of garbage, the whole van is full, and it's down the side of the van and in the front of the van, I think. And we don't take household garbage at the cleanup day either, so. That's not that many stinky garbage.
I'm gonna try to be down there to help, but I'm...
Try to be down there to help, but I don't know.
I'm not sure if Ronnie will be down there or not, I know she's gonna be back on the weekend, but I don't know if she's gonna be there, I should be there at least.
I might be there.
I'll be there.
Yeah. I don't think I can run the end lawn, it probably wouldn't be pretty if I did.
What kind of wake up call?
Can I wear?
2:30?
Yeah.
Can we wear bunny slippers down there?
Sure. They don't want to borrow one. All right, historical money.
Okay, did anyone bring some suggestions about who to, because we already.
For the, for the historical money?
Yeah. Did you bring some ideas?
Kay Strombo. I mean, she has done a lot for the museum and town and stuff. I'm gonna save her.
How about Brooke?
Name on it. I don't know, another one I kind of thought of was John Anderson, but I don't know if his family would be personally or not, so. That was two that I.
Two that you thought about?
How much are those?
They're a hundred dollars.
Sounds like three to my ten.
Yes.
So how many do you have?
Okay, so, well, I would like to dedicate one to Brenda. Yes. And I'm able to, this is what I thought, I just had, this is just an idea, we could, says Brenda Snyder, Town Clerk Extraordinaire, and that word actually gets on there. Yes. Town Clerk Extraordinaire of Superior for 35 plus years, I, we have to put the plus because. Or we could put Anne Still Going, bless her heart.
Still here.
She had to, I told her she couldn't go till I retired.
So I thought, one for Brenda and then one for Roger, for his retirement, we could put, thank you Roger for your 33. 25.
25.
25 years of service to our town. And then, then Kay Strombo actually helped me with a couple of them that are, go way back. Arthur Philip Johnston was the founder of Superior. And, well, that's what I thought to put on the brick, he actually donated a lot of land for town of Superior. And he was born in 1860, died in 1930, so we could have his birth and death dates on there. And then I didn't realize that Oswald Joseph Pike was our.
OJ.
OJ, do you guys know him? I mean.
One of the original, I think he was one of the first mayors?
Yes.
Eo Pike.
He was the first mayor. He was the very first mayor of Superior from 1948, and Kay helped me figure all this out, and from 1948 to 1952, and then actually went on to be the county commissioner for two, few times, I believe.
I remember him being mayor, but I don't remember the years.
Yeah, and I guess then he passed away after that. Fairly young, I guess, so that would be kind of cool to have him, and then, this one is, is, and I, I'm not sure we want to do it because, but it is mineral county. And he was our first state senator, Orville Grant Willett. He, he named Mineral County, he suggested the name for Mineral County, and it was voted on and accepted, and he was our first state senator, and his birth and death, 1876 to 1928. So, that would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, so that's seven, so. Always think of some more for next, you know, next month.
Yeah, go with those seven.
Yeah, seven, and, and you could, you could buy, I mean, the charm brick actually has Superior Montana on it, so if we can't think of 10, we could get a couple of those bricks, so. I just got a check in the mail from the newspaper ad, I don't know if anybody saw the newspaper ad for it, in the mineral paper where you could cut it out and fill it in.
It wasn't this week, it was week before, I think.
I think you're right, yeah, from Arizona. I don't recognize the names of the people that they're dedicating the brick to, but from Stancliff or?
Stancliff, Dr. Joyce and.
Dr. Floyd.
Floyd's.
Mental health, I think, the state mental health.
He was, he was a doctor here for years and years.
Oh, was he?
Yeah, he was a local doctor here for years and years.
Nice.
So was Dr. Doyle. What was his first name?
Oh, nice. Well, he bought three bricks from, so I was excited about that, yay. Yeah, so, cool, all right, well. Oh, he donated that?
It's kind of important because he's a kind of.
He had property right there, didn't he?
He still do that.
Then his daughter still owns it.
And I thought we could, we could do one to the firefighters. To firefighters, it'd be nice to thank, to thank them. Let's do one for the thank you, a thank you to the Superior volunteers, firefighters.
They all appreciate it.
Yes.
You know, frequently a council, the council that's seated at the time, that you do something important for the community will have a brick or recognition of the entire council. And all the council's names there, 2018 Superior Town Council, that's very common, a lot of times you see them as plaques on the new building that you built.
Might have to save one of those for us. All right. Nope.
All right, well, new business, records disposal request.
Annual, the audit's done, filed with the state, get rid of the 60-year out, that's exactly what that is. I follow that records retention schedule very well anymore, we don't have enough room.
Room, yeah.
To keep filing this stuff up, so, yeah, so now they changed it that they don't want the normal everyday stuff sent to the state, and it used to be, they, we'd send it to the state, we'd have five different departments and entities that had to sign off on it. Now this stuff, they just said, take that to the council, because we were inundating them with too much stuff, is what we were doing.
Need a motion home?
Yes, I do.
I'll make a motion, get rid of the, whatever's on that list. We have a second?
Yep.
Bonnie a second?
Okay, Bonnie?
Well, I heard Bonnie, I saw hands coming up over there.
Yeah, we're all seconding in.
Other discussion? Questions?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Six years in the end?
On some stuff, no, like his, his, his water tests, nope, they're permanent.
Forever.
Yes, they're forever. PERS reports are 30 years after you quit, mine will be there forever. Because I, we can't get rid of any of them yet, because I haven't quit yet, so we can't. And then, like annual and annual reports, budget reports, and audits are all permanent records, so there's some stuff we can't leave, check registers, but any of that we can get gone, we do, because it's just, we just don't have the space.
Okay, James Park Playground Equipment.
Kind of discussed that a little bit at the last meeting. I am just not very organized tonight, and I will point blank say I'm not, because it's a lot of. But we talked about, we went through the kaboom stuff, and I think I, I think in our packet, we didn't get the grant, they keep changing the rules, adding new, a new section to do. When I talked to the gentleman from the playground quote that we received to do the grant, the kaboom grant, they, with the kaboom grant, you pay full retail price, there's no discounts or anything, they give you the grant. So, I asked him to put together something that said, okay, what would it be if we did playground equipment without the kaboom grant, and they discounted the equipment pretty close to $6,500 without the grant. So, the playground equipment would be $18,972, the borders were, would be 27, 2917, the freight's 2448, he said that went up okay, but they would eat the increased cost. So the total would be $24,337 to do. I have pictures, some pictures. This is kind of what it looks like, there's two views to the, two, two views to the biggest piece, and I know that we don't have colored, nice colored printers, so. But this is, this is, there would be three pieces, one piece, one would replace the slide, that big slide would be replacing the whole slide, the spinner and then the bigger, the bigger whole area, so that's kind of what the layout looks like, and then. It, that's kind of a view all the way around it, because it's, it sets way out there, one is the front view, one is kind of the back view of it, so, there's a lot of climbing stuff on it, they seem to like climbing things. Colors were one thing, we, we had them give us information on the bright primary colors, there's also, we did one on blue, green and a neutral tan color, so it'd be kind of like, what would you like in the area?
And these, this equipment is geared a lot towards toddler?
Anywhere from five, anywhere from, actually anywhere from toddler up to about 10, which is post, mostly what that park is.
Used for.
Yeah.
And then, so each piece of equipment would get its own border.
Yes, and they, they kind of recommended that because of the age, like the slide is a little bit older than, than the kiddie slide, and there is a slide on the, yeah, there's a slide on the.
Actually, both, there's two.
There's two, two slides, but they're like, those are, can be where the toddlers can go down them, this one's for the little bit older kids, and since there's an age, age thing, they, they say it's best if you kind of separate them a little bit by distance. Doesn't mean that the little kids aren't gonna go down the big slide, doesn't mean the big kids aren't gonna go down the big slide. It's just, it's just gonna happen, you know, yeah, yeah, so, but that's kind of where it was, and I was, wanted to know if the council wanted to proceed with that, or not.
What are we gonna put in the, chips in the inside?
That's what, yeah, so we'd have to work on doing something about the chips, so.
We'll also have construction costs. Sure.
Yeah, I'm scheduling this, if this comes through by September 13th. Strategically. We'll have plenty of time. Him and the new guy will have plenty of time before snow flies.
Yeah, because we still sitting on a piece of equipment.
Yeah, and we should be able to, I'm hoping maybe we could get to that next week.
These are, this is what the other pieces look like, front and back, so that you see that there's more to it than one side.
When would delivery be?
I'm, I'm thinking that they'd probably be, probably two months before they actually deliver it to, he didn't exactly give me that, but it usually seems to be that nothing ever comes in. James Park, the little park down here, take the oldest slide out, put this stuff in there, because area, the swing would still stay. I think there's some, there's a little climbing piece, there's this funky little thing, yeah, there's an old merry-go-round there.
Is that safe?
That merry-go-round was replaced a few years back.
Was it?
No, it was just fixed, we've, we've never replaced that merry-go-round, that merry-go-round would be $12,000 to replace.
Yeah, I remember it was, the cheapest one was eight thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just have a new, a new base built by our new.
Okay.
They, they haven't been able to break that one yet.
Yeah, it's held up really well.
He built it very, very good.
You see twelve teenagers out there hanging on it, doing what it's not supposed to do, and it holds up, it's a good one. Well, you know my feelings on it, you know, on the floor, getting all the parts, you know, increasing things in them. Wouldn't, could we possibly do a build with a volunteer?
Yeah, we could, if they, if it can be all be coordinated to do it. Rodney could lay it out.
Yeah, Rodney could lay it out.
Because we know Roger's not, you know.
He's good at laying out, he laid out a lot of that stuff out, but it was wrong, and it was wrong, and he straightened it all out, and I'm like, you go for it, I don't know what it is.
I mean, if it's, if it's closer towards the end of summer, I think you'd get a better turnout for volunteers.
And we could figure out how to schedule it closer to the end of summer. Even if we got the pieces here, we could figure.
Now, the 24,000, that doesn't include the chips?
No, we're gonna hopefully make.
We're gonna beg.
Beg, yeah.
We're gonna beg.
They do seem to want to help the community.
And it won't be near as many chips as it was, as a big one up here.
I don't think it'd even be a truckload.
No.
I don't know the dimensions of it yet, but.
And I put feelers out today.
You can't tell by this what the dimensions are, but I, I think you have more than truckloads.
Do you?
Yeah, you might have three truckloads.
This one up here was five or six.
Yeah, it.
Yeah, or more.
Yeah, do you have to have chips, I mean, is that required by, by state?
You have to have something, because they can fall in and.
I mean, we used to fall in grass when I was growing up.
For safety fact, I mean.
Gives them some cushion.
Oh, and the old.
Good man, white put there, kid can still get hurt.
Right.
You try to mitigate it as much as possible.
Well, I was thinking if these are for little kids and it's low to the ground, but.
Uh, they're not completely low to the ground, and the slide is not totally low to the ground.
James Park is the only park too that doesn't have a covered picnic table.
No, it doesn't.
So.
Have to work on that one too.
You know, that might be something that would be nice to go along with this.
I'll work on that.
You know, what, whatever. And then, you know, every park would have one, at least one. You live by Kelly, I don't know, you'd know more about how amusing it gets.
It actually gets quite a bit of music, particularly with small kids.
The smaller kids, I guess, because it is a small.
Right, and most of the equipment that's in there now was put in in the 50s, early 50s. It's really old stuff, except for that little spring thing, and that was done in, maybe mid to late 80s.
Okay, now the only other, I know there's, we have money in the cap room, the only other thing that, where are we standing on skate park?
We're working on that, but I did get another line at one of the grants courses, there was a guy that was out of Stevensville that was talking about that they just recently did a skate park, and he had an actual list, and so I'm trying to get that list for grants of where they went, and then another lady is gonna send me what their Tony Hawk rent actually looks like, so I can look at it and see where we can go with that too.
What about, I mean, we have an idea on what the cost would be.
We, we do on the concrete, the concrete, what was it, 100 by?
50 by 100?
Or 60 by 100? It was 35,000 for the concrete.
Okay, that, so that's not, we talked, you talked one about one that could be figured, can be configured if the kids got tired of.
That's not, yeah, when you can move. Yeah, that's what this would be. Yeah, that's what, we, we'd have the concrete base and then the pieces that we could move, we haven't, until we figure out kind of what size we're looking at, figure out what we can order.
So, so just for a piece of equipment like that would be 35?
Just for the, just for the base, just the concrete.
Just the concrete slab.
And then you have to buy the other pieces.
We'd have to buy the other pieces.
Thirty, 35,000.
That's what they, pretty much quoted.
Because I don't, I mean, I don't want to cut it short.
No, we'll continue to work on those.
If something comes in, you know, because that is also an age group that needs something to do.
Right. Right. And then, and two, we also, besides having the capital improvement monies for the park, there, we do have the other one that we usually use for like town equipment or something that we could draw out of for something like that if we need to.
Which one is that?
That'd be count 4,000. And that one right now has $36,000 in it because we bought something out of it not long ago. The park is sitting at $41,000 right now. And then, we're coming up in June, I'll be making the transfer, and I'm hoping to drop about $15,000 into each one of them, or maybe a little more. It just kind of depends on where I'm sitting for the cash.
What's left over for the budget.
Yeah. Because I, I have an idea of where I want the cash to be so that keeps us stable for the rest of the year when I do budgets. So that's kind of where I start looking at those numbers.
I don't know. I don't know how the rest accounts feel. If you don't happen to know each, if, so if we went with the one slide and did the one turnaround, it would be a little less, correct?
Yes. I don't have, let's see. Do I have to break out?
What do they call it, a typhoon slide? Yeah, typhoon slide.
Yeah, because see with the, like when it was with the kaboom grant, this whole thing would have been over $30,000. The typhoon slide is $5,499. That's the big one. The freight on out was $1,006.
So we would still have the same little slide.
Let's do it for the little stuff.
If you do the littler one, it still needs to do something with that little old slide. And taking that little old slide out, putting the bigger slide in, kind of brings in a little bit more of the people. Now, you could leave that spinning one out totally. The, um, the one structure is $16,818.
That's the bump, that's...
That's the, that's the bigger piece.
Has a bump slide.
Yeah, that's the bigger piece. And then if you wanted to do the 16, I know I just looked at that number, 16818 and the 59, what is it, 5900?
5499.
5500, I'll just go with that. So you're looking at, at, you know, 20, 21,000 instead?
Yeah, definitely.
And we can drop it down. I mean, if you want to just like do those two pieces, leave that spinning thing out. We tried for it for the kaboom. I was just looking at a way to...
I mean, I really liked the big ones.
Okay.
I mean, because it also, it has action, there's a critter puzzle in there, and so that's...
It has a climbing.
Building on there, on young kids' thing. Yeah, it has a rock climb thing there. I mean, I really like that.
Okay.
I just, you know where I'm at? I just liked the one side.
So do you want to just do the big one and the, and the slide, and then leave the other piece off?
That might be it.
Which part are you talking about?
That spinning thing.
Maple.
Yeah.
You know that slide that's down there now? That's probably, outside of the swing is the most popular piece of equipment.
That's why, that's why we're trying to give something that had a little more pizzazz than the one. And we didn't want to do a full turn, too much of a full turn because they don't go very fast sometimes. Like, one of those...
Let's leave the maple off, then.
Okay.
And, and I'll make a motion we purchase the other two pieces of equipment and put them in James Park.
We're leaving off this one.
Okay. I'm just going to have the two.
That's your motion, correct?
That's one motion.
Got a motion, you have a second?
I second.
Emily, second?
Yep.
Further discussion?
Yeah.
Question?
Aye.
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 Okay. And we'll start looking at a way to do a cover picnic table.
Make it too nice, I'll be out there smoking cigars.
Uh-oh. I didn't hear that. Don't forget to...
Young lungs.
That's right, young lungs.
Yeah, you better get one of those signs out. Okay, Southside Road.
Is this safe? But this is the back?
Yes. I believe you had a copy of an eastern document. Hope you didn't read it, spend any time with it. Anyway, 1915, Northern Pacific.
It was hard to read. It was hard to read.
Railway. Granted, a right-of-way, it's called, they really refer to as co-locate roads, but within the railway right-of-way, the county can establish a road there. If you carefully read that from the milepost markers, it's the one that's right out here to the one that's right over there. So that includes the section of Southside Road that we're trying to get some effect in cooperation with MDT to resurface that road and recondition it. It has turned into a battle royal. It has gone up, down, back and forth to the, every level and thing, and it's finally ignited a, a big general discussion about roads and co-locate roads. This road is being held hostage for three sections of road out there and a section over here and things, so we're not getting any cooperation for it. But in the meantime, the only practical thing I know is that the town Superior shouldn't particularly have any interest in that piece of road. And I don't know why you'd have any interest in it since the county has the right-of-way and not Superior, so. What I would suggest, I guess, is that we maybe consider some kind of information letter, you know, to the state of Montana that we don't have any vested interest in that road. Therefore, we are going to no longer expect that the gas tax for that section of road is going to come to the town of Superior.
We were talking this morning about contacting MDT and having them readjust the, what we just turned in. By, what is it, about a mile?
It's a mile.
It's a mile, so...
That's what I just ruled it today.
Okay, have them take a mile off of our thing and see if we can renew, redo that before they do much more work on any of our stuff. Because they haven't sent out the information for the budgets yet. So we can do that tomorrow.
So I just, you know, discovering some of these...
I'm reading the...
It was in there somewhere.
Yeah.
Takes some digging and stuff.
Oh, yeah. Wow.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Kind of unrelated subject, though, the monies that's been generated for that. It's kind of something that's been remain on the table, I guess, as far as funds that you've received for that section of road.
No.
At least MDT is still expecting that there's going to be a co-op between the town and the thing. I guess I don't want to sell everybody short that...
We've received money over the years. We've already said we use $25,000 of the gas tax funds towards it. I don't see why we'd still do that. They'll be considered getting a part of the act.
Now, wait, hold on. In cooperation with, let's, let's go over this again.
Okay. So with that road, the town has received gas tax monies over the years.
Previously.
Now they're saying it's county road only, which who knows for how long, whatever. But the town has already said that they would take $25,000 of the gas tax monies that we've received to help pave with the, because we've, we agreed with that for, with Peabody, or Jason.
Same guy.
Sorry. I know, I didn't mean it not that way. But the, to help with the county and help to get that repaved out there. So I don't see why there would be any reason that the county couldn't continue to say we're going to do this because of all this lovely mess.
So we agreed to this, we had a motion?
We agreed to it a few months ago because we had already said, you know, because it was still up in the air that we were, it was our street. And we've always said it wasn't our street because we've always said it was the state's. Because the state always told us we couldn't touch it for years, up until two years, two, three years ago.
It would really be interesting to know what transpired when Terrace Springs was part of the town and annexed into it, and then it was de-annexed.
I have, I have the resolutions on that stuff, but that's...
Well, it was de-annexed. But I can only presume that they said, if you're going to have that as part of the town, the road going to it is going to be part of the town's responsibility, but nothing formally...
But they've never, for years, the state never allowed us to even put a sign on it. You fixed a sign on it one time, they've out, had a bit.
Yeah.
So...
So are they going to work this out to figure out whose road this is?
Well, it's actually, obviously, the county's.
Then they'll have to work it out now. It's our road.
It's the county's road.
Oh, it's county.
Right.
Okay, it's for sure county.
So since the town has received, you know, funds for, or throughout the years...
So we're going to honor the contract that we have.
I think we should be honoring that, what we've agreed to. I don't see any problem with doing that at all.
We never did any repair whatsoever to the...
No, we never have.
I've never touched it.
Never have. But we should try to get it taken care of because there's no way the town could, could do a whole while on it.
The whole thing, that's true.
And so we had agreed to that we would do, put in $25,000. I don't remember what Jason was going to do and then trying to get the state to do something. And I don't see why, you know, we've already agreed, we've received the monies, it's the county's road. Either pay, we either pay him to it, or we should, you know, say honor the agreement and...
Well, yeah, I mean, you don't, if, if we made that agreement, I don't know about God, but just because they declared that, but it'd be a one-time thing, you know?
Yeah, and that's what it would be, is a one-time issue.
Yeah.
But it's good faith to take care of business what we did. But I definitely want to get in, I want to talk to MDT tomorrow and get us, get that mile off of our street inventory. Then this county will have to, I guess we can have them call you to get it back on for the county?
Yeah, I'll talk to Jason.
Okay. Because we can call MDT tomorrow and we'll work on that.
And when you do those maps and you fill out, you...
Which we just did for this year. That's why I'm going to call them, we want to call them tomorrow and see if we can get it stopped and adjust it.
And we'll be doing the same thing, taking ours on hand.
Yeah. Yeah. If we amend it now, it might be early enough that everything will be taken care of and...
Hasn't been registered yet.
For this year, this next fiscal year, yeah. Because I haven't received anything regarding what we get for the budget.
The taxes are fiscal year, so it's not...
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Lee?
Nothing.
Clerk's business.
Do have a few things under clerk's business. The apartments are going pretty well. I have a draw that's coming in, should be coming in this week, so I'll be sending that out. As you know, Wells Fargo is closing. So today I went up and closed the safety deposit box for the town at Wells Fargo, moved it over to Trail West. Moving the money is a little bit different matter. I'm talking with Wells Fargo, the bank, the merchant service is supposed to call me, and I want to also talk to Michelle Perkin because they said she has this, and, you know, it's not a sandwich machine.
Yeah.
It's a Panini machine that they run the checks through. And she has one in her office, has had it for about a year, I guess. So I want to talk to her and see how that's going. They're telling us that we could do that, and where we would run our deposits ourselves, and they go directly into our account, which I don't have an issue doing that. Cash would be an issue. My plan would be that we open a checking account at Trail West because there would be no place to deposit cash here, and I don't want to run the Missoula every day. So we could deposit here, we could run it up for a while, write a check, run it through the Panini machine, that'd be fine. The reason I'm not excited about transferring the money from Wells Fargo is right now the town has 100% pledged securities. So I'm asking the bank over here, they haven't got back with me yet about what they would do. The last three times I talked to them, I was told that they would do what state law requires, which is 50% pledged securities. I don't know about you, but I'm not excited about losing the city money in, in any form. Easiest thing to explain it is $750,000, $250,000 is FDIC approved, the $500,000 left, $250,000 would be covered under the pledge securities, and you have nothing. Right now, I looked at the pledged securities again today to review it for this month. We have 1.2 million in pledged securities right now. We have 100%, we are covered. We have 1.5 million in all of our funds. $30,000 sitting in STIP at the state. We have about $70,000 in CDs over here. And then we have the rest that are, and it's fully covered. I'm more comfortable with it being fully covered than I would be at 50% pledged securities. That, that doesn't...
Well, you're not taking a gamble.
No. I would have to, they're not sure how we would do the wires, and we only do two wires a year. And so there's a possibility to have to drive to Missoula and do the wires once in June, once in December to do those, if they, if they want, somebody in person to do them. They're talking about letting me do them online, and that's for the water and sewer payments. I am going to call Maria Rosario at US Bank, where we do the wires now, too, because one of the clerks went, oh, we have direct payment. I went, oh, really? You do? So I'm going to call and see if we can even set it up that way and eliminate the wires. So I'm working on that, but I, I'm just not jumping into that, other than I did move the safety deposit box, because there's no reason to keep it there.
So they're just closing this branch?
They're just closing this branch, yeah. What it is is, is they're losing money on this branch. They haven't decided what they're going to do with the ATM machine. That's, that's the story at this point.
Well, just keep it posted.
But I wanted to let you know why I'm not making any fast, fast moves with the money. I don't want to do that, so.
Well, nobody likes to be fast with money.
Right. And we did, we finished Luca addressing, address reviews. Those were fun. Well, we, when they, we did the last census in '10, they'd taken the trailer court out. So we had to add all the apartments back in this time. So we've had to add in quite a few, quite a few, plus quite a few new ones down on the old golf course, and there were a few out here on Fred Mayo Lane, and some of them were on there, some of them weren't. There were a couple of interesting addresses that we deleted that we know were out in the county. One was in the West End. I'm like, nope, nope, that's not Superior, so. So other than that, we're, we're doing, okay, oh, and we, I researched the ownership on the abandoned house, forwarded all that information to the town attorney, and he's sending a letter to MRL. The lease is gone. There's, the lease has not been there since '08. The taxes have not been paid since '08. They've been put up, it's been put up for tax sale, but since you can't buy the land, nobody wants to buy it, so it's still there. So it's essentially abandoned, and MRL sent us a letter, or an email, saying that if it was violating a code, a law, or whatever, if we put it in writing to them, then they might address it. So he was going to put it in there with our community decay ordinance and with public, public nuisance, not a state law. So, in practice, type nuisance, so. And he talked to the sheriff about some of the problems with, with what was, what was the health or safety problems and, you know, fire issues and things like that, so. So, that's where that's at. I haven't heard anything more on that, so. I think that's where we're at.
Consent agenda.
I move that we accept the, approve the consent agenda.
Motion, second?
Second? Doesn't matter. Either one.
You got Tom?
Okay. That's fine. All right.
Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a more inclusion.
I heard that. I heard that. I'm out of here.
Right on, Bonnie.
Questions?
Got a question?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Aye.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, take a couple.